Good evening, everyone. I'm going to do a roll call. Um, Miss Griffin is not here tonight. Meg- uh, Megan Doyle?
Here.
Scott Fermer.
Present.
Tracy Erby?
Here.
Tom Kova?
Here.
Lauren Mahler is here. She's just stepped out. Christina Preet?
Here.
Mike Smith?
Here.
Cindy Wilf Woyton?
Here.
Susan Blennen? I am here. So we have eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine present. All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to the second budget workshop of the Milford Board of Education. It is January 16th, 2025. Um, we are ready to continue our due diligence with, um, discussion of the 2526 budget, picking up with question number 21 and moving on through the questions that had been submitted as well as, um, a few that were sent in to me, um, this morning and last night and this morning, which I forwarded to administration. So, um, we can begin with number 21. Dr. Katia, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we're gonna take a moment, uh, to actually give you two pieces of information as a follow-up to two questions yesterday. Um, information that was requested by the board.
Sure.
So, Ms. Auterri is gonna give you that information.
Yeah, so two of the questions that were asked last night, one of them around the summer school programming, and Dr. Katia had provided numbers for several of the programs that we had, uh, in our immediate reach. One of the ones that we needed to get more information on for you was the elementary school, uh, enrichment, and that was 30 students total enrolled in that program over the summer.
Enrichment or summer school?
Summer school.
Summer school.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you.
And then the, uh, second topic was around the right to read, the 346,000 for supplies, and the question came up around any other costs related to the Science of Reading and Right to Read Act. Uh, we do have, uh, curriculum funds allocated in the budget that is proposed to you, uh, in the amount of 10,756, and that is to support teams of teachers at all of the elementary grade levels, K through five, for the development of curriculum maps.
Okay. Um, board members, any follow-up on those two items? Okay.
Okay, so we'll jump into question 21. Yes?
Thank you. Uh, just as a point of clarification, the packet that I handed out tonight picks up with those remainder questions, so we'll continue with the package you had from yesterday with the other questions. Uh, attached to that packet as well is some additional information on buildings and grounds projects. We'll get to that at that question.
So they should have two handouts?
Two handouts.
One from last night and a one-pager from this evening?
Yes, so we'll continue on the one page of last night.
More than a one-pager, though.
Yeah.
Oh, mine's one, mine's one-page, sorry. Pardon me, you have to.
Yes.
You have more to speak.
All right. Question 21, legal services. Please discuss options that have been discussed related to decreasing rising costs on legal services. We had previously discussed and ruled out internal legal counsel. Has that discuss, discussion changed? For many years, we have utilized Bertram Moses PC as the law firm for Milford Public Schools. Having a large firm such as this to address the needs of our district is a benefit because Milford Public School receives input from different attorneys who have specialized expertise in a vast array of situations. Currently, we face more complex legal matters, and finally, we are reaping the benefit of working with it firm.
Any questions, board members, on this? Thank you.
Question 22, did we change the line items to now have 4303 and 4304 with the budget line items specifically for preventative maintenance? Account 4303 consists of two components, restorative maintenance and preventative maintenance. Restorative maintenance is restoring an educational facility or area to its original condition and usually entails larger items and needs of, and needs immediate repair. Expenditures could include ventilation controls, boilers, dehumidification units, and other HVAC related issues. Preventative maintenance is servicing and repairing equipment and facilities to minimize equipment breakdowns and failure. Typical preventative maintenance tasks are pneumatic controls, overhaul compressors and dryers, air handling units, clean coils, adjust belt drives, grease, building envelope, which could include recaulk windows and needed to recaulk exposed control joints, and boilers to strip down the boiler, clean fireside and waterside, change gasket, clean mud drums, and retract the steam valves. Account 4304 does not utilize preventative maintenance that are typically projects to enhance the building internally.
So were these, have we always had these two lines? I think, is that the question?
Yes, and, and in the budget book, uh, those are, are listed in the narrative section.
Mm-hmm, correct.
When you look at the account in your, on page, uh, Roman numeral 12, it says preventative maintenance, but that preventative maintenance encompasses both that restorative and preventative piece.
Ms. Rose, did you have a question?
Uh, I feel like we've, you've done a great job of breaking down some of more of these lines. Is that part of this? Because I don't remember restorative maintenance or any or preventative maintenance being like a line. It was just maybe maintenance and internally had those discussions?
Yeah, historically, I, I'm not sure when the restorative maintenance piece has gone in there, but, um, that really falls into the preventative maintenance piece, but it's kind of more along those lines of when something needs immediate repair. So the way that I kind of think about those two accounts is the restorative maintenance is, we have, we have something, a very, a very important situation that needs something right now, otherwise can't run.
Correct.
Uh, that would be that restoring it to the whole. And then the preventative maintenance would be our ongoing PM program where we maintain the different, uh, elements that we have throughout the school system so that things continue to run. So restore is more of like an immediate need that needs to be addressed right away, and the preventative is more of like staying ahead of that curve.
Okay. I think I probably just remember we spent a lot of time talking about building projects and project, ground projects, and probably really focused on those before.
Yeah, I think, I think typically it would be in that preventative maintenance line, and when an issue would arise, we would pull those funds from the preventative maintenance line because that's the code that would typically, where it would fall under. So I think just to be very clear and very forthright, we separated those two lines to make it. Here's one type of it, and here's the other type.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So building projects would be more like painting and replacing cubbies and stuff like that?
Yes, yes. It's more to enhance the building internally.
And those are the things that you cut back on this year?
Correct.
Because of our long-range planning.
Correct, and those are the ones that are actually included in your package here that I handed out tonight.
Okay.
It's a list of all the buildings and grounds projects by school. Uh, those are a list that's developed annually with input from the building principals. Mr. Bradbury and his team, uh, working with each building principal, they create a prioritized list of needs for that building, which adjusts each year based on things that are occurring. And then, uh, every year, we prioritize what is going to be part of the budget.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? Ms. Mahler?
Just to clarify, the account 4303, that line is called preventative maintenance over on Roman numeral 12 in that budget. District maintenance in 4303, but it consists of these two subcategories. Are those two subcategories specifically earmarked out within that total line? Or are they both just the two types of buckets that go within 4303?
So typically preventative maintenance is the stuff that we plan for. That restorative is something that's not planned for.
Understood.
Yeah, so.
But from a budget perspective, is there a pot of money sitting there waiting to be used on the things that break? And then the planned-out pot of money on preventative that is within that 145 or whatever that line was, the 145?
Right. No, it's, it's, it's preventative maintenance, the stuff that Mr. Bradbury identifies as ongoing stuff. And then when a situation occurs.
It'll come out of that same bucket of money. So is the 145, the preventative maintenance, as you said, is the stuff you can plan for?
Mm-hmm.
So if it's planned for right now, is it planned to a level below 145 so that there's space for the things that will inevitably break in this coming year? Or if things do break, will there be things on the preventative list that don't get done?
So we use that preventative maintenance for the preventative maintenance. And then, just like when we have like a situation, like, if you remember back to when Harborside would like flood or a boiler goes down, we would, we would pay for that money, and then we would try to utilize something like insurance to reimburse for that money.
Okay. So it still comes out of the 145 that's?
It still, it still comes out of that account.
Earmarked to the preventative maintenance, you just hope that it gets replaced eventually with the insurance or whatever, from whatever that is. Okay.
But it's hard, you can't predict what, what needs to be restored.
Right, right. But sometimes there's.
You're not doing everything in July. You're taking the year, so you would have that money throughout the year. So it would not be immediately expended.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, question number 23. What primarily accounts for the cost difference of electricity for Law versus Horn? Same for the middle school runs. So these two schools, in reference to Law and Foreign, have two very different utility needs. At Foreign, there is a large chiller, a pool, and overall more air handling equipment. As a result, more electricity needs to be generated to operate Foreign High School. Foreign uses close to 500,000 more kilowatt hours than Law does. You, and they, and that's based on the use of the chiller, the pool, and the entire school air, school area is being handled by those air handlers. So Law still operates, there's sections of their building on a steam, heat, and exhaust fans, and Law also produces close to 600,000 kilowatt hours through the solar, uh, system. Uh, not the solar system, solar system. Solar, both are true.
I mean, tech fear, not wrong.
Solar system.
It's very indirect.
I actually saw that one, a bubble going on.
Through the universe. Um, Harborside Middle School has less HVAC equipment than East Shore Middle School and West Shore Middle School. West Shore Middle School has more square footage that is serviced by rooftop air conditioning units. So that's the makeup.
Questions on this? Okay, next one, 24.
Question 24, what is the status of a stockpile which allows us to purchase items in bulk and save money on costs? I believe it was a procurement plan and where this would be located in the budget. At this time, due to other competing operational costs, we are planning to put the procurement plan on hold until we're able to secure funding to properly implement this initiative. Some of the required costs that would be included in successful implementation of this would be a climate-controlled warehouse facility, electronic tracking management system, staff, equipment, and other related costs.
Any questions on this? Um, I had thought that meant, going back many years ago, we had, um, we were, we were trying to track certain supplies by, um, with codes. Do we still do that?
So we do. Uh, yes, I, our IT department has a coding system where they track their devices through that.
Okay, thanks. Number 25?
Number 25, please remind us on line 5108, funding for non-public transportation. This is for parochial schools, and are they required to reimburse us for any of those costs? Milford Public Schools is required by state law to provide bus transportation to all non-public schools within Milford, including St. Mary's, Academy of Our Lady of Mercy, which is Wilton Hall, and Milford Christian Academy. These schools are not required to reimburse us.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Question number 26, please discuss the increases in property liability insurance. How have recent claims that we have had, i.e. Harborside flood, Pumpkin Delight frozen pipe, frozen pipe, affected our premiums? Can we expect our property liability insurance to increase with aging buildings? So our LAP, which is liability auto policy, uh, property, insurance is through KERMA in a policy that is shared with the city of Milford. The rates are based on experience of all claims that arise from the Board of Education side and the city side. Increases in this policy could come from claims that occurred on either side.
So do we, do we pay a percentage of that? How is that determined?
We do, we do. Yes, we pay, um, a percentage. I believe it's about 31, 32% of that.
And that's something that, is it, you agree upon with the city or KERMA determines what portion of the premiums?
The city, the city.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Question 27, what is the increase in telecommunications line, 5401, attributed to? This small increase of $11,956 is due to the increasing cost to utilize cellular and landline services, which are emergency red phones, elevators, areas of refuge throughout the person.
Questions on that? Yes, Ms. Mahler?
Just a point of curiosity, not concern, just to clarify. In looking at that line, where it has gone down, 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 and then the tiny little bump up, what exactly are the costs that are associated with utilizing that that would shift that much each year?
Uh, yeah, so that would just be our cost of like cellular, um, landlines, cost to run those copper infrastructures. Um, when you work with the different companies, they have increased costs that go up over year, just like any other, um, company. So that, that increase is based on bills that we are receiving from these companies and what we're projecting we're paying them.
Okay. Did we at any point shift carriers or anything? I think, um, you know, I see that there's, uh, going from 2022 till, there was a decrease of about $40,000, $45,000 between 2022 and this adopted budget. Have you changed carrier, carriers or anything?
It's when we're switching over to our voice-over IP.
Okay.
We still have some copper lines that need to run in the buildings, though, because those lines back up those red phones into our emergency landline phones, our elevators. Things of that nature need to still have that.
Right. That, that. Thank you. Any other questions on this one? All right, 28.
All right, question 28. Reminder of what is included in line 6100 of non-instructional supplies and is 6110 the right-to-read increase? Um, as reflected on page 35 of the budget book, 6100 non-instructional supplies include general consumables such as copy paper, office supplies, and supplies to support the delivery of professional learning. Account 6110 includes the supplies that are in direct support of instruction in the classroom environment. And in response to second part of that question, account 6110 includes the required curriculum materials to support the full implementation of the right-to-read legislation in elementary school.
Page 35 has, uh, greater detail on the types. Any questions on this?
Yep.
Ms. Mahler?
Yes. In looking at the non-instructional supplies, completely makes sense, all of those things. What's the increase, um, for, the significant increase looks like it's mostly coming out of central admin non-instructional supply costs?
What page are you on, Ms. Mahler?
I'm sorry, 29.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look.
We're gonna have to dig for that.
Okay.
Number 29.
29, reminder of what is included in line 7310 of each quarter. This information can be found in the superintendent's proposed budget in the appendix on page A22. If you go to that page, you'll see things that mainly fall within a few different categories. The, uh, district safety and security, maintenance, special education equipment, and calculators for the high schools. Those are the four broad categories that most of that equipment falls in.
Any questions on any of those pieces of equipment? We can move on to number 30.
Question 30, for the last two budget cycles, we have slowed the replacement cycle on security cameras. What is the status of our replacement cycle? We have over 750 cameras spanning 15 locations in the district. The replacement cycle's intent is to replace priority areas first, and then, if possible, replace the non-priority cameras. Here is a breakdown of how the cycle has gone with the budgeted funds. In 2122, labeled that as a phase one, we requested 100, uh, and requested, that could be requested from the safety and security director, and through the budget process, received funding for 74 of those. In 2223, phase two, no funding in that budget cycle. 2324, phase two, requested 100 and received funding for 50. 2425, phase three, requested 100, received funding for 50. With end-of-the-year funds from last year, we did replace an additional 37 cameras. This budget calls for the replacement of 75 cameras as well as the addition of 12 new cameras, 12 cameras in new locations.
Questions on this? Ms. Mahler?
The 12 cameras, you category everything as priority and non-priority areas. With the 12 additional new cameras, do they fall into just increased coverage of non-priority areas? Or are there new areas that have been identified as priorities?
New areas that have been identified as priority. So, um, Mr. Nielsen continually works with buildings and has situations occur throughout the year. They discuss and say, it would be great to have a camera in this area. Um, so that's, that's kind of the process of how things come along. We, we build based on areas of coverage that are, are missing or lacking, and that's where they would identify new cameras.
Okay, so they would fall into that priority category?
Yeah.
Area. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Number 30. Okay, we move on to 31.
31, what can the high cost to Keene, Capen, and Mathuason compared to other schools be attributed to? We are in the process of gathering additional information with the help of our testing and balancing consultants. It is important to ensure that we are balancing the indoor air exchanges accurately and not over or under exhausting. This information will be shared with us from the consultants who are conducting this work. And just as a further point of clarification, this work with these consultants did not come out of this question. Uh, this is work that we have been engaging with for the testing and balancing of all of our schools, which was, uh, which was starting at the end of last year.
Had there been, had they noted that there was a, um, higher cost at these schools?
We don't have those reports yet.
Oh, okay.
But it is something that is on, um, Mr. Bradbury's radar and something that he has, uh, noticed as well. And so when he gets that report, he's gonna take a look at it and, and through consultation with them, determine whether, you know, what the level of exhausting is in that building.
Are we still using, um, any computer software to monitor those types of things?
Yes.
I, I think he used to get a, he would get like a ding, uh, you know, like a message if something was, seemed out of whack.
Yes, he gets a ding, he gets an alert. Um, he also is able to, uh, turn on dampers at more of a, an opening to let, to release more or to close it to release less, so he can control all of that from an electronic system.
Um, can you share some of that information? Um, can you share some of that information with us when you get it?
Absolutely. So, once, once we have that information, um, you know, I'll discuss it with Mr. Bradbury, and we can talk about how that information's gonna be shared.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on number 31? Mr. Smith?
Do you have a rough sense of when you're gonna get the report? Is it like weeks, months, days?
Yes, um, so, weeks to months, close, not, not months, like nine months.
Right.
A sooner rather than later type.
Okay.
Yeah, and then Mr. Bradbury and the team, we will review it, and then we'll discuss the findings.
Thank you.
Is this part of what's beaved into the air quality assessments that we discussed previously?
Yes.
The first step of that, going through and evaluating it all?
Yes, on a regular basis, um, so every five years, we need to conduct a testing and balancing, so this is, this is coming out of that work from previous.
We were just talking today, when, looking at the planner, when would be a good time to propose putting that on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Maybe when those numbers are ready. Month-esses.
Definitely not before.
You like that?
Yes.
Any other questions on number 31? Number 32.
32. Uh, in the presentation to the Board of Aldermen this past spring, at one of the members' request, you provided organizational chart. Please share this year's and next year's proposed organizational chart with this board. Please include all central office, including instructional supervisors that are under the MEA contract for allocated in central office. It was mentioned during tonight's presentation that there will be changes in district instructional leaders. Please also confirm who oversees instructional coaches that are in the school. So, for clarity, are there, are there are no instructional supervisors in the MEA contract? Uh, those are teacher leaders. Um, so I'm assuming that's what this author means of this question. Um, and instructional coaches are supervised and overseen by school principals. So, attached to your packet, the last three pages, um, is the instructional, I'm sorry, organizational chart for last year, 2324, organizational chart for this year, 2324, 25, and for next year, proposed 2526. So, I'll highlight the differences between the three charts, please. On the 2324 organizational chart, you will note eight teacher leaders, and those are the, um, eight in the bottom-left corner that are in the MEA union. You will also note, um, as we move to 2425, two differences, one being the reduction of one of those teacher leaders, you'll see that, um, position struck in the bottom-left box. And you'll also see, because we had, um, some changes in the admin team, we renamed a couple of positions and moved them to create a student wellness focus under the PPS department. So, you'll see, uh, the student development, academic success, and school climate position moved out of the instructional supervisor box, so I'm still on the left side of the page. So, there are no additional FTEs in the admin. It was just a renaming of title and shifting to what department those two positions belong to and to whom they report. And moving to the proposed 2526, there are no additional FTEs again, uh, but in the bottom-left box, in the budget that is before you, we're proposing reduction of 2.0 teacher leader positions. The reason why they have not been struck from the box is because we haven't decided which positions will be removed. Two positions, um, currently that we have for teacher leader is, um, two in the PPS, um, department, and, uh, five in the teaching and learning department. So, we will, um, next year be down to five teacher leaders, where we were at eight two years ago.
Can you go back and reiterate what you said about the student wellness, the student development and wellness position that?
I'll walk you through it, um, differently. In 2324, uh, under the title instructional supervisor, we had a student development K5 and a student development 612. See that?
Yes.
If you go to 2425, you will see those positions no longer in that box.
Mm-hmm.
And those two positions report to Ms. Stewart now, and we retitled them based on what we were seeing, um, the needs in schools that were. And now, we have a student development academic success supervisor, that's a K12 position, and a school climate supervisor, that's a K12 position. So, it's been moved to a different department, report to a different cabinet member, and renamed.
And it's two positions?
It's two. So, no additional FTEs.
Right.
Just a restructure. I may have talked to the board about looking at, um, the continuum of services for student development and wellness, not waiting till kids, um, are identified, uh, and really trying to have a department under Ms. Stewart that was more holistically, um, supporting kids as opposed to waiting for an IEP to kick in for services. So, um, she's working on making that shift with her new team.
So, in 2425, no additional FTEs in the instructional supervisor piece, but there was a, one reduction in, uh, teacher leader, correct? That strike through, student development and wellness?
Yes, ma'am. There are no additional FTEs in administrators amongst these three years at all.
My recollection from a work that we did not, like, a couple of years ago, uh, research that we gathered was, our, the number of our administrators has been stable, maybe
We've added, we added the administrator for equity and engagement.
It's been stable since 2012, is my recollection. Like, the same number of administrators with that one change.
With that one addition. And, and, and don't forget, um, because Mr. Richatelli's position was a non-certified, certified position, pardon me, um, that was technically, and, and this is all state rules.
Mm-hmm.
Because Mr. Richatelli was not a certified educator, he falls under the supervisor, um, category. But Mr. Brennan is a certified educator, and therefore, we must, uh, code him as an administrator. So, it would appear that when Jim retired and Sean took the position, that we added administrator, but we did not.
Shift.
It was just, and it's a shift of coding that we're required to do. We can't just keep Sean over on that other category.
And it reduces the non-certified supervisors that way.
Right, correct, yeah. Right.
But if you were just simply picking up a piece of paper and looking at number of admin, it'll look like we added two in the last couple of years because of Ms. Akampora and Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. It's complicated. Any questions on this? Any questions over here on this? Good, Mr. Cremender? You're good? No questions?
Can we move to the next question?
Yes, I think so.
So, before we jump into the next question, uh, just have some, uh, opening remarks. One, this list is always hard to, um, develop, because, uh, what it means for our team is to go back to our notes to October and sort of take a memory walk of all the things we said no to. And it's already hard, and the first time to say no to good things, and now we were creating a list of what we thought were ambitious dreams. I also want to remind the board that, um, we hold true to a zero-based budgeting process. Uh, that is informed by, uh, classroom teachers, department heads, curriculum leaders, teacher leaders, principals, supervisors, like every, uh, there are different opportunities for the budget ideas that come up from each, uh, school. So, these ideas that we proposed to you in a budget is well-informed. It, it's not just, you know, Dr. Kataya's idea. And when all of those ideas come to our table, this year, for the development of the 2526 budget, I want you to note that, um, all of those requests came out to 143 million, 380,807 dollars. So, when you're looking at a 28% increase on November, like, 6th, when we sit down with this, we're going, you know, to get down to, um, what we believe is fiscally responsible. So, I, you can imagine what it feels like when members of the public state that we haven't been fiscally responsible, when we're looking at saying no to so many good things. I want to just break down the difference between the number that's in front of you and the number that came to us in November. Twenty-two million and change, and I'm, I'm just gonna say about twenty-two million dollars was requests that came for building projects. A little over two million dollars were requests that came in for grounds. And then, a little over two million dollars was everything else. Technology, uh, supplies, programming ideas, more curriculum writing, um, more HR ideas, more staffing for PPS, um, more equipment. So, we were able to reduce from all requests from staff and administrators, um, around 28 million dollars before this budget came to you. Uh, that was a very difficult task, uh, to say no to great things, but also to make sure that we were, um, coming in in an area that we thought, um, would be consumable by this community. I will tell you in my conversations with superintendent colleagues in the last couple of weeks, because we're all coming out and presenting right now, I don't know if you've been reading headlines, but, um, we are on the low end of the increases. And we are keeping a chart, um, actually, the, um, Association of Business Officers and the Association of Superintendents keeps a combination spreadsheet. I'm happy to share some of the numbers that are starting to come in. And there are very high numbers across the state, because we're not the only, uh, community being faced with transportation increases, insurance increases, utility increases, special ed. So, we're in good company when it comes to, um, some out-of OUR-control increases. Okay? So, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share that preamble. If we jump into question number 33 now, you state this budget contains no new programs or improvements. What things might have been proposed if we did not have such significant budget drivers affecting this budget? And similarly, another question came in stating you've mentioned continued request from staff for more flex or up-to-date furniture. Besides that, what were some of other principal or staff requests that you said no to? Ms. Glenn, would it be okay if I skipped from reading the entire list, or would you like me to read it to the, into the record?
I don't think you need to read the entire list. I think you've highlighted some of what, what the types of things were that you asked for. Just give us a half a second to maybe.
Consume it, that's a great. And just to note, but the building and grounds projects are an, um, additional attachment to your handout.
I see some things on here that I've seen before, pottery wheels, um, digital art materials, musical instruments. These are things that we limited or said no to before. Anything on here, the board members, a lot more explanation of, um, Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. It is hard when you're, you're like, how much could a powder wheel really cost? On the ONE TRP, Teacher Residency Program, Resident Teacher and Company, and cost, is that related to the?
Educator diversity?
It is. So, are we continuing with one, because we had two? Is that what we're doing?
Captain?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, um, one this year, and we're hoping to get two next year, but we've reduced it to one.
Okay. I know we've been struggling with that program for a while. How, um, never mind. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Uh, thank you for that description and the overview, and I guess I just want to tease out a few more, I guess, one question on the overview and a few comments. So, based on your experience, and it certainly do agree reading the headlines, we've done a pretty good job of coming under some of the budget requests around. How many other superintendents is so strictly adhered to this zero-based budgeting that you do? Do you have a sense of, is that a normal thing, or are you one of the outliers who is able to do it this way?
I wouldn't call myself an outlier in that budgeting process.
Okay.
It's a very typical, um, budget-building process that we teach in 093 school, um, superintendent school.
Well, I, yeah, and I.
And I think it's, I, I'm not a business person, but I, I think it's a healthy practice to.
I think so, too. And, and it is one of those things that, it was one of the, one of the core tenants that was drilled into my brain by one of my favorite professors in grad school with the importance of zero-based budgeting. And so, the, the reason I say, uh, the reason I ask that question is I just, looking around how other districts have, the, the number, the percentage increase of their budget request is certainly above where we are, and I wanted to commend you for your adherence to zero-based budgeting and the, the tough questions and the tough decisions you made to put this in front of us. And I, I do also have to admit that that adherence to zero-based budgeting probably makes our job harder, trying to find any more efficiencies than you've already found. But, uh, I mean, I do think we're, we're trying to be good stewards, and just, just really wanted to commend you and appreciate that, uh, that you're a budget.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, thank you for saying that. We could easily, as a team, say, hey, let's come in higher because we know we're gonna get cut. Like, that's, um, something that maybe some professionals entertain, and, um, we don't do that. We, we are giving you the best budget we have. Although, I think we've scared our budget leader, our business partner. We, we are probably like in a really, um, tight budget spot for July 1st. If, if this gets approved the way it is, we are terrified if it doesn't go through. There's nowhere to go. We did it. We, you see the teaching and learning lines. They're tight. And we can't not pay transportation, we can't not pay the health insurance, we can't not buy the right-to-read stuff.
Yeah.
Can't not pay for the lights, right?
And, and I think, especially looking at the building and grounds project request, even just reducing it from over, over 24 million dollars to what's included in this budget, I think, I think this question and this conversation does a pretty good job of setting this budget in a way, as we're talking, as we're also at a parallel track, talking about what we want our facilities and schools to look in the long term. And really do appreciate that commitment to the, putting in forward, putting in front of us a budget that, that gets us moving forward while we're also doing other work to figure out what we want our long-term vision of this, this district to be. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Erving? On the first page where, um, I'm at the, on the list, high school, after-school health and, and about credit recovery, is that additional credit recovery? That's not, or is that the only credit recovery? So, is credit recovery in the budget?
So, we had a program, uh, that we're able to grant fund through the ARPAS or grant that was successful in connecting with students. We wanted a program that was really gonna catch students before credit started to lapse and students failed the course. How do we get kids in after school, be able to connect with them, support them in their coursework? It was incredibly successful. It was one of the elements that, as the ARPAS or funding ran out, that our high school principals had requested to have within the budget. Definitely something that I think is of significant benefit to students in terms of supporting their academic success, uh, and, and it's had great impact. We had a lot of students engage in it, participate in it, but it's not the budget.
We have summer school for credit recovery.
Is that only in the summer school?
Only in the summer.
And how many students throughout the, were there before in the program?
In the day program?
In the day.
We can get that information for you.
Yeah. And it's probably, um, a misrepresentation, though, because it ran primarily through COVID. And we, we found many more kids needed that additional support. I, uh, we do have a need to develop a, a, a stronger credit recovery approach. We, that's on Mr. O'Toole's list, on his five-year plan. And some things, um, Ms. Erving, have to wait, because you can't do everything in one year, right? Like, just at home, can't get to everything in the house. So, the credit recovery program is on our list. We know, we know we have to improve it.
And there's no limit in the summer, right? That's open to whoever needs to. That's open to whoever needs to receive credit?
It is, but that's a wait-to-fail approach. We know kids who are in danger earlier in the year. You know, January hits and we are already seeing what's in front of us with some kids. So what was the nice thing about that funding is we were able to put something in right away. And we were able to, like, support kids. And even though they were still kind of teetering, there was that support all along the way.
It is a good program to have.
And it kicked off mid-year, like right after first semester, students took exams, we were able to catch them in that moment and be able to support them if it was a student that needed to recover credit during the year, if it was a semester course, or bring that grade up so they have a place that they feel good about where they're going toward the end of the year.
Is this the first year that this funding is not, that there's no funding in the budget? Or was, do we have the program last year in place?
We did, we did have it last year, but it was not in the budget, was through the grant funding last year.
Oh, okay.
Arba.
Can I ask a?
Yes.
Are, because that program's not in place, are there seniors who will not graduate because that program's not in place?
I think it's too early to tell. Is it right now midterms?
It is, yeah.
But if you're a senior and you're maybe in danger of not graduating, you're more likely knew about that before right now?
So it's credit.
Unless there's like a kid, like really.
So they're catching mostly fresh, like fresh, second semester freshmen, June, those two times. So hopefully by senior year, they're ready to graduate, have caught up all their recover in the summer, doing their credit recovery now. It's what they're going to need to do.
Can't they recover a credit over the summer of their senior year and still graduate?
With their peers.
Any other questions on this one?
So I'm curious about two things. On the first page, at the bottom of the bullet list, the additional safety measures at the elementary school level. And then on the second page, there are two bullets I'm assuming are related to the technology endpoint detection and enhanced security information. Can we just hear a little bit more about those items?
So I feel more comfortable talking about safety matters behind closed doors. But I think we have talked to this board about considering next steps of safety in our conversation with the police department. So we'd like to take that step probably in the next fiscal year. So.
2627.
Yes, ma'am, pardon me. The next time we're talking about a budget like this in a year. So we would like to invest in next level of security work. I think we've talked about that.
And then the other two?
Then the other two I can take. So endpoint detection is like your antivirus software that's on your computers. We have it on all the computers, but this would be like the next step. So that like when phishing emails come in, it's flagged there instead of at the server level. And it helps to protect it a little bit more. Same thing with the, they call it a SIM that detects when stuff goes like out of our network or if something comes in. It would be 24/7 monitoring so that like there's a, another person looking at it besides us because eventually we have to go to sleep. So, you know, between like 10 and 6 at night, somebody's monitoring and can alert us that something's going on and you can react quickly rather than next time, next thing in the morning.
So with, if I'm, if I'm understanding you right, then without this, we're not especially vulnerable. This would just take us to.
Just the next level, yeah, the next level. Like we're, you know, protected to here. Let's, you know, completely cover our heads, you know?
But protected here is.
It's really good.
Okay.
There's a lot of other places that are down here.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it would be to really enhance it, not to fully, you know, we're fully protected. This would just be the next step.
Almost an extra technology layer and a couple of ways to cover what we're already doing.
Any questions on this? Next question?
Yes.
All right, I have your last question of the evening. Account 6411, which is on page roman numeral 15. Can you explain text adoption? As detailed on page 35 of the budget book, text adoptions is the process by which staff select new physical or digital textbooks to augment and support the curriculum in a course. New texts are vetted by the curriculum development team during the program review phase of the district revision cycle. Textbook adoptions are in support of the curriculum implementation guides and are in alignment to state and national frameworks. Examples of text adoptions within the current budget include our mathematic digital course, digital resource at the high school level, and AP US history texts, also at the high school level.
Other questions on this? Ms. Erden?
So that's one that varies, right?
Correct. That will determine, it's all based on the curriculum revision cycle. So as departments go into the program review phase and they start vetting resources, they'll start actually planning for the purchase of textbooks before they go into that systemic implementation phase of our curriculum revision cycle.
So it's correct to say that we're on the low end of that cycle right now because there's only two texts that are in that current.
We are on the low end of that cycle. Other than ones that are typical renewals, like our DESMO software at the middle school and mathematic at the high school, in terms of new books this year, I would say the low end of that spectrum.
And that's reflected a little bit in the actual budget.
Yeah.
Does it every couple of years?
And I'll, you know, I'll point out too that as teams are revising curriculum, they don't necessarily always have to change the textbook. They may come around that phase again and determine that the resource that's there is suitable to support the work that students are doing in the curriculum. And they decide not to renew or go in a different direction of the resource. So that's an option too, Ms. Erden.
Any other questions on this question? Okay, so board members, I just wanted to ask, did anybody submit a question that they don't think was answered? I get a lot of emails come in, so I just want to make sure that everybody's, questions that were submitted were answered sufficiently. Yes.
Dr. Katia, I just wanted myself, for my own thinking, to reiterate some of the things that I understood from the discussion the last two nights. You know, for me, I'm going to synthesize all this over the weekend. And hopefully when we come back next week, we'll be ready to, you know, potentially vote on Wednesday. I don't know if any clarifications might come up over the weekend. But, you know, I heard that the impact of the Durham contract amounted to an increase of, the Durham contract itself, 891,000, which was a combination of regular and internal special ed transportation, which was in line with the estimate of 900 to a million, 900,000 to a million per the budget assumptions that were unanimously adopted in October. And then the special ed line also increased incrementally as had been, was also indicated in the assumptions. I heard that over, the overall 4.87% increase, while it's a big number, is almost exclusively the result of contractual obligations and increased costs of doing business. I see that you found almost $650,000 in savings out the gate for us. You've told us that there's no new initiatives in this budget, but you're confident that this budget will continue to honor and support our commitments as outlined in the executive summary, which I appreciate. The implementation of the Right to Read Act was not as costly as we originally anticipated, in part due to the commitment of our staff to engage in that professional development in-house rather than bringing somebody from the outside in, which typically comes at, I think, a pretty steep cost. We've heard that student needs continue to grow in profound ways and that student and staff wellness is important. You've told us that you held thin on buildings and grounds projects because of the long-range planning work that we're doing, which is in line with what Mr. Smith said a few minutes ago. And that there are a big list of things that you opted to hold off on in light of the large impact on other, on other, you know, factors that led to what we have in front of us. Did I misconstrue anything?
I think you portrayed that correctly.
So board members, again, you know, I'm happy to hear any closing comments. You know, my hope is that we can come back on Wednesday. It seems that as long as the weather clock rates, we can meet and vote. Even if we did have some last-minute things that we need clarification on that might come up as we are considering all the information that we've obtained over the last two nights. I think we do have a public comment on the agenda for Wednesday. We always do that public comment before we vote. So, you know, if we have discussion, we'll discuss, then we'll have a public comment, then we'll vote. Anybody have any questions or closing comments before we adjourn? Is there anybody who disagrees that we should be ready to vote on, that we could be ready to vote on Wednesday?
I don't disagree, but I have a just clarifying question. We do have the opportunity to, as you said, synthesize everything that we've gotten of last couple of workshops over the weekend, come back with any other follow-on questions or anything we may need to discuss. Wednesday.
Yes, well, yeah, I mean, as long as you give them to us in advance. We can be ready for that on Wednesday.
Yep.
Correct.
What would you think would be a cutoff for any additional questions Monday at some point?
Well, Monday's a holiday. So I would say, you know, by the end of day Monday so that they can have them fresh on Tuesday.
Particularly if they're questions that you need answered in order to feel comfortable to vote. If you're like wondering what that $10,000 is and, but if there's something that really will weigh into your decision.
Ms. Dorell?
Thank you. I just want to say as always, thank you. I'm trying to think of how many budgets. I think this is my fifth budget or fourth, I can't remember. It's gotten lost in here. And it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, we go through here in this budget book and we get it. And there's an incredible amount of information that we are processing and going through. And I think every time we come into this room to do our jobs as Board of Education members, we're taking the information on our budget. And our budget is a reflection of our values. And that's what we said over and over again, is that we are investing in our students, in our educators, and making Milford the best school system that we can within the reality of a tight budget season. So I appreciate that. And I look forward to hearing everyone's comments on Monday about where we are. And just thank your, your team and the principals and everyone's efforts on this. It would be nice to have a budget where we can be like, there are things that we don't need, but that's not the reality. It's never the reality. So thank you.
Ms. Dorell, I would agree with that. If there's no one else says anything they'd like to say, I'll entertain a motion, oh, public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to make a public comment? But I'm dispensed with the public comment statement and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And it is 8:00 PM.
I only get 30.